Co-chairs for the fourth annual Walk a Mile in Her Shoes, which is the International Men's March Against Sexual Assault and Violence for men, women, and transgender. And we service all of Schuylkill County free of charge for all our victims and their families. So it's the fourth annual, so we invite you all to come walk a mile in their shoes. My husband does it, these gentlemen, they are so gracious to donate their shoes tonight. It's Thursday, April 24th with the main fire company. Registration starts at 4:30 and the walking is at 5:30. If you're not able to make the walk and you'd like to make a donation, we have donation cards anywhere from $1 on up. So certainly, you know, we'd like you, certainly if you see your favorite gentleman tonight in their favorite shoes, make a donation for them and their shoes. So I'd like to introduce Micah and the group tonight. Thank you very much. April 24th, sign up, we have cards and pledge cards. And they only staffed that I would pay the wage.
That's what I said. You gotta get a photo, sleepwalk.
Ross, your angle, boys. Jennifer and Christine and Carrie, I want to thank you for allowing us to participate in this. I know the event is on the 24th in Boston. I do hope we have some people from Toronto who could attend. The Borough Council is very proud to do this, to help raise awareness for a very serious issue that we have to deal with unfortunately in our community every day. This is a very lighthearted way to draw attention to a very, very serious issue. I want to thank the council members and the mayor and the chief for agreeing to do this again this year and to support this.
I see Attorney Greig needs a pair of shoes.
Yeah. And if you see your favorite council person, make a donation with their favorite shoes in honor of those.
Or woman, I'm sorry.
I'd like to call the regular council meeting on Tuesday, April 15, 2014. Last day will be carefully raised. If I come from the pair and I'll lead the second room.
Lord, be with us tonight as we meet. We're blessed with the wisdom to know what we must do, the will to want to do it, and the courage to undertake it, perseverance to continue to do it, and the strength to complete it. We ask this of your name and then.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual but liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the reading of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on April 1st, 2014.
Motion, second, three.
Second. There's a motion by David and a second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. You guys have it. Communicating.
I have two. First is from Edwern Knott, lead pastor, New Life Assembly of God. We are planning to host a new event at our church called Feed the Need on May 10, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This free event will provide food, clothing, haircuts, and lunch to 100 families or households in Tamakiwa. The purpose for this event is to reach out to our community in a practical way, especially during these difficult financial times. We will be handing out bags of groceries. For lunch, we would like to offer hot dogs, chips, and drinks. There will also be several games for the kids while our blessing shop is open to the families. Due to the number of people we expect to attend the event as well as our location, we are concerned for the safety of those attending. That being said, we would like to request that the Tamakiwa Fire Police would be available to come and be on site that day to assist with traffic and helping to maintain order. Thank you for your consideration, it is greatly appreciated as we endeavor to encourage and support our community.
The motion is granted, request of the letter.
A motion by David and a second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments about the motion? Anybody from the floor want to comment on this motion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And if opposed, no. Guys have it.
Next is from Margaret Marino. Regretfully, I am submitting my retirement from the Borough of Tamakiwa as Housing Rehab Secretary after 33 years of employment. I was asked to retire due to funding. Effective retirement date is June 1st, 2014. She asked that the proper paperwork be submitted for the pension.
The motion by Brian and a second by David to accept the retirement. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes, the program will continue. And I would just like to say a few words about Margaret. Margaret has done a really nice job with our housing rehab program for many, many years, managing, helping manage our CCBG funds and also our old revolving loan fund. At this off-the-logic Tamakiwa development, house repairs, sidewalks, furniture, roofs. Our collection group is remarkable on the homes that we make. A lot of communities back in the 70s and 80s spent all their money on roads, not just revolving loan programs, but still helping people develop. So Margaret is going to be part of that after the condition that passed. So I think she's going to be sad to see her girl. She's going to be doing her stuff for her girl.
She's a very proud woman of her heritage. You can always talk to Margaret about something we can do. She will be training somebody to do some of the work.
She's working with Dan Schrader to transition her portfolio of homes.
Recently, we all, I'm sure you all were notified, from Champ Holman, Deputy Secretary, Pennsylvania, New Development, Tamakiwa. And they were just, they quite asked the state college to discuss this program. Now, it sounded to me, I didn't have government jobs, because they called, it sounded to me like they were interested in kind of changing a little bit to be funded through the county.
Apparently, because we're an entitlement program, or we're an entitlement community because we have a certain population, we get a certain amount of CCBG funds every year just basically because we meet the population threshold. The funds go from the federal government to follow up Pennsylvania and then to the Borough of Tamakiwa. So what DCB is considering doing is having the state, still get the federal funds to turn over to the county, let the county administer it to the municipality. It would reduce our entitlement to not, because it's the cost of that.
Only for municipalities between 4,000 and maybe just a threshold of 10,000.
So cities would still manage their own. Cities get it directly from, get the CCBG funds directly to them.
Probably increase it.
It wouldn't increase our budget. What it would do is it would give Dan Schrader somebody to, a little closer to home to work with. I'm assuming somebody before he was a minister.
Isn't it true that the non-entitled communities, which the motion was set aside that the people, which I assume would be minister by that same camp?
And they already are. The county already administers the non-entitled. Lots of changes, not the least of which is to continue, continuing to climb in the amount. Margaret's position, again, position of 100% by the, by our annual grant allocation. You guys have all seen the proof there, because each year our allocation keeps going down. Any other questions or comments about Margaret? Anybody from the floor with any justice comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no.
Aye.
Rural manager report.
Actually, since we're talking about CCBG, I was talking to Dan. Maybe the focus was on talking about 2014 program. We haven't seen anything from the state of the world about the program. In fact, the 2013 program still hasn't been, uh, worked. Because it seems to be sort of lagged everywhere. But I just hope that our school, that our county, that our town, so. If you recall, last year, we did this process up in Norman, which is fortunate that we did, because when the project happened, we'll see what's going on. I'm sorry, I said we had a pause, we stayed in the first hearing before the, the first state.
We usually do the hearing in March anyway. If you did run March and everything, but they haven't given us the time. Is it too early to have a hearing? Do we pretty much have to have a hearing?
We're just afraid that what happened last year would be something this year.
The council be agreeable to having our first public hearing before meeting the day? Before the second meeting? If you have ideas for projects, like Kevin, no, Kevin, in the package for next month's meeting, we can include last year's address.
And the last time we were able to save five pieces of equipment, that advertisement was, it was paid for. We also have big forms available and present. It all began before that, that was the first thing made for us. Also, there's a community, like, they're cleaning up schedule for this Saturday, of course, but this is all on Saturday, April 26th. How we've got these downtown areas to be back locked around 9:00 o'clock. And we wait for the residents to use all those sweepers side blocks, or suppose downtown side blocks at that day. That's, that's typically a spring. So again, that's April 26th at night. And along that line, we've had a sweep, we're out the last couple of weeks. Starting next week, we'll be posting two weeks. So I asked the, uh, the signs. And lastly, and lastly, David, councilwoman, post vacancies. We had one vacancy for water distribution department. So that's, application period starts to expire, expires Friday. We have no request to transfer the street deposit. And we have one request from Joe Carey to transfer the street to the Department of Public Safety. And also, all our posted, your vacancy, it's not a good recipe. But on the stack, as for the, 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 the position, it's, uh, trial period. There's a 30-day trial period that we're going to transfer. That trial period is in the fly. And I understand it's only 26 days, and everybody, so far, has been, although the recommendation would be to possibly probably. I need to be definite, I'm just saying. Would there be an issue with making a new permit and nothing to translate in the next calendar? So, like, now, uh, since, okay. Okay, I made the motion to do a, like, that, the permit. Provided, there's no issues in the next, so.
The motion by David and a second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Guys have it.
And we're deposing the two street positions outside of the. Our next step, uh, we would like to advertise.
The motion by David and a second by Brian, advertising the two street positions. Anybody from council which should address this, this motion?
Aye.
We have to, we have to, so all of them.
Okay, we have, we have one available street position.
How ridiculous.
You have one available street position, you can advertise, right?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to, I'll make my motion.
Oh, I'll be glad to advertise.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's where I'm at with this. Just checking. Advertise the one in the tree position.
I'll second it just to get a question.
Anybody have any questions?
Under the question, so, so I have, so we're going to advertise in paper one and then advertise internally the second.
We're going to advertise for the streets, or we're getting more than one out based on that. And then we're going to post either.
That's what I said, so you're going to advertise for one, you're going to post for one.
I advertise for one. Just right after.
That would be four street. Right. So it's one on one, one external, and external on each side.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? Not all of you in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Guys have it.
Another question for Kevin on the, so what are we going to do with the Blue George issue of law? Are we going to approve anything there? Back to the land?
Why should, do you think, I would ask why? We shouldn't wait until the 30-day trial period is over? Fourth would be filling the vacancy created by, by the council, right? This trial period ends on Friday.
Make a motion.
Wait till after Friday to make it effective.
Make a motion to be transferred to the water charge back to Friday.
Motion by David, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor which should address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Thank you, Kevin. Pleasure.
I'd like counsel, where the county is converting to digital radios, as discussed previously. I'm not looking to film it right now, I just wanted to be aware of it in the future. Like, mandatory to the county. And of course, but this is so, it's not a surprise, maybe a year, year and a half, a year to the better down the road. So 65,000 of them. And then it'll be five mobile radios and 10 portable radios. Like I said, I'm not looking to film it, we're going to stay with the analog. Not going to digital until we have to, but it may be mandatory to the county. So I don't want this to be a surprise down the road. People want to tell us about this previously.
Chief, did you also mention at some point that you're in anticipation that you were looking to see if there's any available corresponding grants or anything like that?
Kevin Meyer, Donut USA grant. We did the big walk now, it's well coming about today. About to clear it, maybe this section's uncompleted, we're submitted. Phil Hane and the county's car rights office. Said there's not a lot right there, but they may add to it. And if they are, we certainly want to be, we mentioned, have a chance to. But I just wanted to be aware. I'm not looking to film it, I'm going to be aware.
County looking at their making it statutory, because they're going to make the school.
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
Getting a grant.
That's what I'm hearing, but I, it's not substantial. So that's why I'm bringing it up, because it might be.
But the last time, when they were talking about this, because they were talking about it across the board on this firing, and that's in the way I believe it's set today, which, again, could change tomorrow. The police were going, the fire was not.
Lots of PD went on it. It was going on next week, Paul Harmon, somebody else, I can't remember who it was. West Penn's getting them, they need them down there.
The point of that is, is I believe the county may have cannot set, yes, full fund, one radio. Well, one radio and you have four vehicles and, you know, 10 officers. It's something that's drawn the market.
We appreciate that. We'll hold on to the analog while we can. What's on I have, slide from other reports?
Many reports. Parking traffic.
I'd like to make a motion, this is an item that we reviewed off of the pending item list. I'd like to make a motion to install the parking signs on the north and south sides of Woodsburg Street between Hunter and.
Second. Motion by Dan and a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just for questions, so if we're putting these middle parking signs on the north and south side streets, the north and south side, um, is that for both sides of the street then?
That, that block of Woodsburg Street.
Yes.
Yeah, north and south of Woodsburg.
You're taking, you're taking, on Woodsburg Street, you're saying, the whole parking.
From Hunter and from Hunter, between Cherry and Hunter. It's a little long.
Gotcha, it's around the corner.
Yes.
I was just showing.
The other Woodsburg.
The other Woodsburg.
I don't consider that a change, that's, that's odd.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? It is both sides of the street on that block. Anybody from the floor which should address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
My lips.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that on that hill there?
Yeah.
Right, is that where?
Yeah, this is right from Hunter Street down to Hill to Cherry Street.
That's where I pass, when I work.
I could ask, or I just want to comment, did we reach out to the one person who lives in that neighborhood and then use it then, or did we let him learn by, by the, the sign?
There was signs up there once before, but they were taken down. And it is, it will be a hassle if one of them houses there catch on fire because they won't make it down. You know yourself, that is a very dangerous spot.
There's certainly been issues with the garbage collection and hitting some of those vehicles that park there. And there is only one person that parks there.
Yeah.
If you bring up a good point, if we could notify the adjacent property owners.
What?
Before the signs go off, we could vote on it tonight, at least before the signs go off.
Yeah, there is only one.
This was actually something that you had brought up.
Yeah.
We just never quite got around to, we ultimately examined.
Yeah, that's when that fire, the fire company kept on coming there constantly, constantly. Because that's like Skid Row now. So it's like, you know.
If you take, anybody else on the floor which should address this? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Guys have it.
Hey, I'd also like to address a letter that we received from Dan Regal, as well as some input from residents of the South Ward, regarding his business at the corner of Hunter and Broad Street. We looked at a variety of different things. Clearly, the residents are concerned about parking of vehicles on Hunter Street. So we decided that what we would like to do is make a motion to eliminate the loading and unloading zone in front of 30 West Broad Street and replace it with a metered parking space and to establish a loading and unloading zone, one and a half hour parking only from 95 in front of 46 West Broad Street. Basically, what we're doing is relocating the space from the middle of the block to the end of the block at the corner of Hunter and East Broad Street. Second, West Broad, excuse me, West Broad Street, sorry.
Motion by Dan, second by David, any questions or comments?
You're going to move here, we put the sign away. So will you be removing the area to put the sign?
Yes.
I had a little concern about this one. They have the sign in front of it, and you want to move it under the sign. Because he's parking on Hunter Street illegally, unloading stuff, but he takes a store. His store is not open during the day from 9:5.
It's not, it's not a traditional storefront in the sense that it's manned 9:5.
So, um, I just don't, he could park. Unloading stuff, and walk up to this place. We have a restaurant, we have a little door. Signs below and unloading put in the back, I suppose. And we can't link anything there, but we could move to somewhere. It just gets a little hard for me. That's my thing.
I believe that, you know, we talked about this a variety of different ways. I certainly think that some of the issues related to the Montagio situation and the tractor-trailer traffic and things like that are a little bit different than a 30-minute business, a 30-minute spot in a storefront. I think we also felt that this is a relatively new business, you know, on Main, on Main Street, what I call Main Street, Broad Street, Tamakiwa. The day I met with Regal, I did express all of our concerns about the parking on Hunter Street. He talked about a few options, we talked about moving the space. I also saw that there was a health one in sign in his window, so, you know, he's a new business on Main Street that seems to be growing, and I thought that it's not a bad deal, not a bad thing to support.
Okay, let me ask you a question. And you told me he's worried parking in the back of his business.
That's correct.
So he can't park it back into his little apartment?
Again, he's faced with, he's faced with the same issue that many of the businesses are in downtown Tamakiwa, where do the employees park? Okay, he also has, I guess, a dumpster, that's probably part of his business too, located there. So the day I was there, I asked him about it, I looked. There were several vehicles there, he called me, were employees, and the dumpster was sandwiched into the river property.
Any other questions?
I have a question. The time period that's not 9:00 a.m. at 5:00 p.m., what is the status of that space during the most, that, are you allowed to park there? Is there a loading zone during that time? If it's going to be a loading/unloading zone, one and a half hour parking, loading from 9:5, what is it from 5:00 to 9:00?
Right, okay, the current, the current sign that's in front of the Bitter property, basically just, I believe, says unloading zone. Okay, there's no, nothing specific as far as days of the week, hours of operation, or length of time. So my opinion is, is that the sign was there for some time. Again, given some of the concerns about moving the space, still having an access, having access to the businesses along that, whatever, that is the 40, 40 block? Or the 0-100 block?
The unit block.
The unit block, right, okay, of Broad Street. I did want to, I wanted to try and put some teeth into the sign as far as when you can use it and how long you can use it. This councilman Mace's position was, is that he didn't want this to turn into a long-term parking situation. And I told him, that I expressed that to Danny Regal when I met with him. So this was just our attempt to try and put some teeth into it for the businesses, not to abuse it, to use it as an in-and-out basis and still have access for the businesses on that block.
So is it the loading zone from five PM to nine?
No.
Is it parking, is it half hour only parking five PM?
No.
So nobody parks, nobody parks there? From five to nine?
Right, I understand, I understand the point. And I did think about that. I mean, and to me, to me, Mike, I, I believe it probably revert back to an open, a, a parking space on Broad Street, whether it was metered or unmetered. Just having to punch, be metered at that location.
People can park, so, so anyone can park there after five to five? That's important to me.
I think that's going to be a little problem, I'm sorry, I don't know. I think to have loading, unloading, thirty minute max, and wait for that. Someone parks there after five, and they don't move in the morning, Danny Regal's going to call us saying, I mean, what's the ticket? But she can't always dig themselves. I, I think putting time on it's a period of a lot of problems.
Loading and unloading, thirty minutes max.
So nobody.
What do you buy recommendation?
He uses this once a day for half an hour?
I, I can't tell you what, I can't tell you what the use level would be.
Why would we grant him this if we don't know how much he's going to use it? If this is only going to be used a half an hour, wait for his convenience? There's a lot of people looking to park on Broad Street.
In addition to some Broad Street now.
Yeah.
Well, again, I, all I, all I'm telling you is, I can't tell you how much he's going to use it because I don't know how much they use the existing space in the middle of the block. It's not just him. I mean, every time I come by, there's somebody in that space. Now, are they, are they there officially to unload or load for a business? My opinion is no.
There's other spaces in town, in Broad Street, that has.
Not with the time limit. And then the loading zone that's there now at thirty West Broad Street, look everywhere for, probably for Moses. So, and, and obviously that's not being used out for that store. So I have no problem moving a loading zone from a vacant store that's no longer using it to a storefront where it was a store. My only question is.
What happens after five?
The whole purpose of it is to delineate from the Punishment Street, you can park there on First Street.
Right.
Because all in that mall are struck the track. That's all purpose of the song, do not distract punishment.
Right.
Do you ever consider amending the motion to take the time?
Absolutely, absolutely. So I will amend the motion to eliminate the hours as well as the length of time.
I would say thirty minute max. Loading, unloading, unloading.
Thirty minute max, okay. So I'll amend the motion to eliminate the nine to five, nine AM to five PM hours. And it will be with one and a half hour home.
Thirty minute.
Thirty minute.
Do you know how much he uses this? I mean, does he, is he there?
Quite a bit, quite a bit, because I discussed with the manager. And I told him, I said, I figure if I'm going to be calling, if you just park in there, leave in there, it should be done. I said, that's, that's fine. And trying to be, have a guy be as current as you can be coming.
So he has hours, he uses this a couple times a day? And then he has hours, he's off and he's done it after bed.
Well, probably any of time because we're limiting on the thirty minutes now to load or unload. Because for him to load or unload, once twice three times a day, I don't know. I mean, supplies are structured.
We don't know that. So we're granting him a sign. Granting him a sign on the court. Busy area, and we don't know how much he's going to use.
How much was the other sign?
That's what I said before. I said, I have no idea how much the other sign was actually used for the purpose of loading or. It says unloading. It doesn't say anything about loading. It says unloading.
We're questioning how often one side we have existing, and we don't know the answer there either. But we know it hasn't been. That's what I'm saying.
Right. So, so technically, it's not, it's not being used at all as it's intended. It's being used by other people to basically pull in, run in and out of businesses there in that block because it's a free parking space.
Right, because someone's out of the house, wants to run activity, this sounds like a full unloading.
It's a different kind of.
Oh, it's true.
Right, right.
You're walking out, we re-park it.
It basically is. We just go ahead.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion?
Can't they just give him a spot and make him pay so much?
Legally, we could, but to do that, we would, we would have to offer the same to every other business. We don't have enough spaces to go around. The reason we have parking meters and the reason we have to pivot up is a way to allocate a limited resource. We don't have enough parking spaces to go around. So if we said, if we granted him space for himself, we, we have to try to find that there. There is a bit of a different, there is a bit of a different situation here because he, he uses it primarily, primarily to load and unload, which is different than if you just have parked there and use this basically. So the borough has in the past not granted private parking spaces, whether they pay for it or not, just because there's not enough to go around. It'd be difficult to navigate that because it's a side we get. So now it's whoever has a quarter of the pocket and says it first. Any other questions or comments?
What, what are we doing right now? I'm sorry, are, are we taking them or is it just more courtesy?
He's been giving her courtesy because the business is Tamakiwa. Trying to, and I told him, I said, you're here loading and unloading, that's fine. He can't park. And he said, well, he asked me, can I park there? I said, no, I can't give you permission to leave the park. What we can do is give you a little courtesy when you're loading it, to get loaded and get out of it.
So it's either offering his employees an option so that he can utilize the back of the facility? Or if this motion is not passed, he's going to continue to basically.
Block.
Load the street.
And see, the thing is, the reason we extend that courtesy is, if there's a oil truck on Clay Street, we tell them, there's no parking space, you can't unload the oil. No, we give them courtesy to block the street for a short period of time to deliver the oil, or a haul truck, FedEx delivery vehicle. It blocks through. So there's courtesy extended a lot of people. This is just one that was given to him, but it's not him alone. I mean, you gotta give a common sense of this.
But then if it's an, if it's an unloading space, will he then park his vehicles there overnight? Are we thinking that?
Now, we're saying thirty minutes to this parking space. That's what the motion was. But anybody who wants to park there? Anybody who wants to park there?
Well, we'll load his vehicles because his name.
No, I know. And I'm, I'm just throwing that out.
We usually know because the neighbor's mad at you out. If you park in a loading zone for, and you're not loading, that's, that's usual.
So, so would it make more sense to offer his employees, how many are he talking?
I don't, well, I think they only have two parking spaces in the rear at the most, two, three at the max.
Because of dumpster.
And plus the dumpster.
So the priority, I think, would be for him to utilize his property, his business, to load and unload and find an alternative for his employees, right? Wouldn't that?
The same all relative for every, every business downtown is.
Either be.
The meters are part of the block, or two blocks, or three blocks of the block. And that's what everybody else has.
And that's on, that's on the table for them, yeah.
And then I have noticed that more frequently recently, since this has come to light in the discussion here, had a committee meetings parking in the lot next door to the Hunter Street lot and walking, and using carts to take your stuff across the street. So since this has really been brought to light in here, we've been complying more often. But what makes this different than a fuel truck on, on Clay Street or whatever is Hunter Street is, is a very busy street. And then when you block that, that side of the street there, it really creates a dangerous situation for traffic coming up Broad Street on Hunter and, and traffic coming up Hunter on the Broad. You're supposed to try to avoid the traffic trying to.
Any other questions or comments?
If you do move the loading zone up to the corner where Regal is, the one that's in front of it, we would take that out and put it up to the corner. You can make that parking spot there.
Would you be?
Put it either down in that spot?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who opposed, no?
No.
No.
Don't vote.
Darren? Honley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Lasky? Now, Mace?
Yes.
Starts with one. Gerstie?
Yes. And I have one last thing for parking in traffic. I would like to approve a handicap space for Eugene Bilko Senior at three hundred North Elizabeth Street in Tamakiwa. I met with Gene the other day and went over the paperwork with him. We talked a little bit about what he would like to do. I believe he would like to have the space alongside his house, which is on William Street, right next to the fire hydrant because he does kind of go out of the basement of his home. So just like to approve. I'd like to approve, I'd like to approve, I'd like to make a motion to approve handicap parking space for Eugene Bilko, three hundred North Elizabeth Street to be on William Street adjacent to his home, is that what you think?
Very long motion by Dan, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who opposed, no? Okay, aye. Anything else to park in the traffic?
No, other than I am trying to put together a meeting with Tamakiwa School District to discuss the concerns on the four hundred block, presidents of the four hundred blocks.
Yeah, if you can, tonight, we just received an application from Nancy Cabana.
Yes.
To basically maintain responding to every there. It was, it was granted on behalf of Larry Passamani.
Right.
But it does appear, the curse reflects here, that the documentation's in order. And it's basically a meeting, a spot, and I don't know if it exists, so I could, I don't know if it's, if it's on the fly, but I, I would make a motion to grant for question Nancy Cabana. And that parking spot up there between the street.
Second.
All second.
Eight seconds by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Again, the, the note that, I don't know if this note is on your copy, but this space was held in the name of Lawrence Cabana, who recently passed away. And I believe we recognized that he had passed away at the last council meeting. This is for his wife to just take over the space. That, that is up on, on the second.
Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who opposed, no? Yeah, it's done. Anything else, Dan? I would like to thank the parking in traffic community. You guys don't get any layoffs too. A lot of, a lot of difficult issues. Recreation and Use Committee.
I have a couple items. Council should have in their package, it's behind the second page of the agenda. Another copy of a letter that he had received from Parag Dovo for last meeting on behalf of the Girl Scouts. Asking for use of the bungalow pool in the pavilion on July eighteenth, twenty nineteen. I had not opportunity to speak to Parag after our last meeting for some clarification of what this request was. The way the letter read, the nature was asking for use of the pool during the whole day for July eighteenth, twenty nineteen. Conversation, or if that's not correct. They're actually looking, this is just a repeat of programs they have done for a number of years in the past. And they're looking for use of the pool in the morning before normal operation of the start and use the pavilion on those two days. So on the basis of that clarification, I would grant the request in the letter, in the letter that we received from Parag Dovo. Out of the last meeting for the use of the bungalow pool on July eighteenth, twenty nineteen. All second, Dan.
Motion by Dave and a second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who opposed, no? Aye.
I'm gonna go a little out of order here. I'd like to make the motion to approve a one-year lease agreement with Salute LLC, three hundred East Broad Street, Tamakiwa, for use of the pool concessions, Dan. Second, that motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just a clarification. This is in response to a letter of request to use the pool, uh, pool concessions, Dan. I didn't receive that letter back in, I'm sure, January. And it's a one-year lease.
New lease, and I didn't look at the fact that we called it LLC. Just on my thoughts on it are that I would, the lease as it is, I could need to do a personal guarantee for it. I don't particularly, it's tone. I don't want to prefer rights to a third party. I want to keep that LLC attached, which I really like, really, because what you formed it. Which is aptly the LLC. In the event there's a mutual lease condition, if damage is to it, all we can see, address from is the LLC. So I think, I think if you're going to approve it with the condition that there's a person guarantee made for the terms and conditions of the lease, by the original, in the recognition. If you don't want to do it, that's fine. That is a deal breaker for her. I don't want to see, at least only the concessions, Dan. From weakness down, what I think you need, Dan.
I haven't made my motion. Mike, did you draft a letter to her explaining what we're asking for?
I will. It becomes a deal breaker, and then we'll deal with it. It's only one release, but I really strongly suggest that, especially if it's a difficult subject.
Yeah, you okay with that, second? The condition that, that there be a personal guarantee. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who opposed, no? Aye.
I had put a motion on the agenda to hire four-time veteran clerk's clerk for the Department of Police. Subsequently, I asked Kevin to look at a motion on there. I've come to learn that our manager do have some things to give him to talk about regarding the happenstance. So I'd like to just act on that motion now, but I'd just request that the, uh, the person who's taking the page and get the employment and take the person.
Any other committee reports? Is there anybody from the floor that wishes to address council, about any matter?
I just out-watched it. I don't, I don't know if you can help us out on this, but I brought the South Ward Playground, me, Kathy, and my family. We have people up there that they wear their pants down, way down, and the girls with their shirts real low. Is, can we put that on a sign that they can't be dressing like that? Because I have other parents that come with their children, little kids, and they're getting like, they don't want to come there because of this situation. I don't know if we could put it on our sign or not.
I, I understand what you're saying. I agree with you, the concern. I think our maintenance and use agreement that we have itself, I must say, allows you to create rules for the, like, and I couldn't do dress in.
I just think, because like, you know, you have the girls up there and they're like showing, and the boys are just like down here. That's disgusting.
My suggestion is if you're going to come up with some guidelines, you should, you should mostly run it by Kevin or run it by ourselves, so we're just going to be sure that that's something that's easily, easy to enforce. Also, I would suggest signs don't really work.
No.
Good signs up, but you're going to have to control them.
Yes.
But I think our maintenance and use agreement allows you to make rules like.
Anybody else from the floor wish to address council? Okay, Mayor's report.
A couple of things to talk about. As the winter is about swinging back on us today right now, but as it's clear enough that the snow and ice has been out, but I know there's a lot of debris that's been left behind. The streets, we can. Sweeping should certainly help alleviate some of those pains. Uh, as, as the information comes out, we're certainly asking our, our neighbors and the community to, to clean up a little bit, sweep off the sidewalks, and, and as a street sweeper comes through, it'll help, uh, clean that up. Um, I know some of my frustration is, is found by, by the garbage or, or that, that was found in the snow piles and now it is laying in the gutters. I know we see it along the, uh, the playground. Um, Councilman Evans had joined me for a little tour of South Ward, they were there the other night, and, uh, and we certainly looked at the parking situation at the high school, and we, we toured some of that. I'm hoping that the street sweeping helps alleviate some of those problems. Um, one of my thoughts where the, that, uh, to help on the, the personal property is I know there's a, a third guy working with Josh and Mitch doing some of the, the quality of life, and they've done some blitzes, uh, as far as snow removal. Maybe we could get them to do some quadrant blitzes around town and then just, uh, make their way around and, and do some drive-bys and visual response on some of the neighborhoods and, and follow up on that. Really, I'll set the, set the tone for the springtime and in the summer, what we expect, uh, from our community. Um, of course, I'm not looking, you know, to, to be, uh, a, uh, pirate type of community, but I think there's a lot of loose violations that could certainly, if left go, could, could get much worse.
And that's, as you call it, the, the streets sweeper calling for a buy.
No, the, the street sweeper does its job, and that's gonna help, I think, some of the pain that I'm, I'm feeling right now, as I see what's left over from the winter. But a lot of, of our personal properties have been left strewn with garbage and, and whatnot, and really could use, uh, some identification to that as well.
But my point is giving, giving people the opportunity to have the streets sweeper buy for, for kind of effort like that.
Certainly, I've already posted for street sweeper work right now.
Okay.
Absolutely. And I'm not, the street sweeper work can take place on, on the streets. And that's the debris that's left over, caught in, in the snow banks, and now melted and's left in the streets. But what I'm, I'm clearly talking about is what's left on the porches, what's left in the yards and whatever. And, uh, you know, we, we talked briefly about one of the members of, uh, the various team that was not at the same level with, uh, Jeff, Josh, and, and Mitch. Follow up on some of those violations. So I think it could be very beneficial to set the tone early in the year on what we expect. And I'm not talking about nitpicking, because I mean, you could spend a lifetime in every block if you really wanted to nitpick. I'm sure you want the violation on, I mean, everybody's property at that. But there's a lot of larger violations, I think, out there. But just, you know, a, a, a couple hours in this neighborhood, a couple hours in that neighborhood, really could go a long way in setting that tone as we start the year off.
Do you think there are like a lot of, or...
Yeah, absolutely. The obvious, the obvious. A mattress laying somewhere in your yard. They, uh, um, windows blasted out.
Allegory.
Roof peeling off the top, um, you know. Um, you know, I, I pointed out some this past week, a, a mattress on, on the, on the back. I'm thinking it's somewhere about, uh, 138 maybe, 140 Penn Street next to Frank Hane. Uh, the window's blown out on 160 and a half. Spruce Street, uh, last two weeks ago, we heard of Montague Street, the window's blown out. If anybody has a name, that's not just one window. It's basically all around the whole house, every window blown out in that house. Uh, and 160 and a half spruce is big, bold window blown out, uh, on, on that property as well. That's just my neighborhood where I lock my dog. And I'm certain if, uh, you know, judging by some of the violations that have ever come down to Maple Street or Arlington Street, you could find some of those same violations back up on Mountain Avenue, uh, you know, through the, uh, the north ward. And, uh, again, I'm not talking about nitpicking, because that's...
It worked really well. It worked really well.
It did. It got everything back in line. People who never shoveled the sidewalk, shoveled the sidewalk from now on to the rest of the winter would be a very tough winter. So that did, that did work well. Going along with that, a couple of weeks ago, uh, I had joined the executive committee where I'm sure most of you have heard about this, if you haven't heard about it, uh, the Dear Tamakiwa project going on. And I know, uh, Chairman Gersky is, is upfront on this, uh, he's one of the executive members of the group. And, uh, there's a meeting tomorrow night. It's gonna be at the library. Uh, I, I had the pleasure of making the last meeting. And, uh, and, and we're really putting on quite the project that's gonna take place in, uh, in the fall of 2015, if I'm correct. Um, where we're really telling the story of our community. And, uh, one of the first letters that came out, I'll certainly read it, but we're asking, good or bad, a letter to Tamakiwa. I have some information here, if anybody needs to see the information. Um, but we're, we're asking to write these letters, and, and they're headed to, uh, the Community Arts Center. And, uh, the owner's gonna be receiving those. Everybody knows the owner, where to find her. Uh, they'd be, you know, just wanna write a letter, drop it off for her. If you want to get a copy of the information and, uh, and...
I didn't see the discovery. I have a big packet. It gives much of anything that we already don't have. In fact, they're all our documents. But I'm over with Kevin. And then, uh, I think we're gonna just get, get a deposition, and I might, uh, motion to compel different answers if we don't have any other counsel. Maps are ill for respect. So we may go over there, but I think, uh, the deposition is...
Thank you. I just needed time to win the deposition, I heard. Is that a silly question?
No. Well, it's not a no question, it's a silly question. I wanna sit with Kevin, of course, and so we, they give us all our documents. In fact, I think I want to go over there and get a little bit of maps they have. And that, that's, what's his name? Uh, you're...
Well, Leslie, what's her name?
Yeah. And that'll be the next one.
We have the various reports of the departments of the borough.
Your motion, maybe accept this. Second.
Motion by Brian, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Anyone who opposed, no? Yeah, it's time. Unfinished business. Bills and claims.
We met yesterday, Carrie, myself, Brian. Karen Davidson actually came, who's very nice, and, uh, we're staying. And we reviewed, uh, the Willing Borough. There's one that we would like to, uh, sit on the side of medical, which comes from labor system. We need all of the further discussion. So, they all will be down.
Second, motion by Tom, second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Anyone who opposed, no? Yeah, it's time. New business. Doing the executive session tonight?
Second.
Dave, go down. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Anyone who opposed, no? Yeah, it's time. Thank you, everybody. It's definitely, I'm all out of quick picture. We gotta do help with, share a few yards.
Too far. You can put one or two on the table. Are you gonna come over and walk with them?
Yeah.
Yeah. She likes them.
If you require, then you don't wear these.
I think you should, and I can also, but it loves that.
If they have to wear them, I recall, Amy, you have very short names.
We would.
Hannah, I'm gonna take.
Yeah, sure.
I wasn't here. Mike, I think an overhead shot would take this straight under their feet.
Mike, does anybody get in this?
Oh, no.
Too many, okay.
Couple more.
I had my eyes on those strawberry shortcakes. I think that's the shot, just the shoes.
Yeah, okay.
I don't see a comparison there because I, I think Carrie should, like, pass it.
Okay, gentlemen, I have a general comment. And a long time ago, I watched an expose on TV about Fred Astaire and Ginger Rogers, and her, her comic was most appropriate. She says, "I don't know why Fred Astaire got all the compliments, but I had to do exactly all the things that he did in the Gilford and New York." But it's true, she did...
Strawberry's are in bloom in Toronto. They don't work that. That's, you got it, you got it. He's soaking his knee in, he's got it, he's got it.
Walked a mile in her shoes?
Yeah. Sexual...
This time your wife wants to wear a flask while she's dancing? No art, no argument.
I don't know why. He has a different VR, he has a naked VR. No, I mean, as a woman... No, you gotta, you gotta know what hat to wear.
So I will talk with Sam, Sam, about those more comments.